The hour of 7:30 having arrived, if we could all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we have a brief moment of silence, I'd like to recognize Mr. Albert Perry on his passing, February 16th, 2018. Mr. Perry served in the United States Army during the Korean War. If we could have a moment of silence for him and all those who have passed since our last meeting. I'd just like to remind everybody that this meeting is being aired live on BTV and is being recorded by BTV, and I don't think there's anyone else in the room recording us. So, I think we're okay. Move on to approval of minutes from the meeting of February 6th. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Haley, made by Mrs. Loesch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to announcements from the President. We just have one tonight that on Tuesday, March 13th, at 6:30 PM right here, we will have the State of the Town press and presentation, and then we'll move right into our council meeting. So, if folks are interested, please come down and hear. That having been said, we'll move on to proclamations, and we are fortunate, I believe, enough to have here some members of the team and the superintendent of schools. Is the coach here? I don't see the coach, but, okay, just wanted to make sure. We have the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School Cheer Team National Championship proclamation, so I'll read it. It is with great pride that the town council presents this proclamation to the 2018 Bridgewater- Rainham Regional High School Girls Cheer Team National Champions. Whereas Bridgewater- Rainham Regional High School Girls Varsity Cheer Team is comprised of 20 cheerleaders and is coached by Tiffany Manhart, and whereas on November 19, 2017, the Bridgewater- Rainham High School Cheer Team won the MSAA Division One State Championship, and whereas in January 2018, the Bridgewater- Rainham Varsity Cheerleaders won the NCA National Championship in Dallas, Texas. Therefore, the town council wishes to congratulate the coaching staff and the 2018 national champion Bridgewater- Rainham Varsity Cheer Team on this outstanding achievement, and it's signed by the Bridgewater Town Council and our town clerk, Merrill Lee Kenny Hunt. Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, congratulations. Well done. All right. Those are the good things that we get to do at these meetings. Moving on to Citizens' Open Forum. Mrs. Hunt.
Merrill Lee Kenny Hunt, 80, Austin Street. Speaking as a private citizen and with show and tell. So, a few, a week ago or so, you know, I walk to work, right? So, I walk down Main Street, Union Street, Church Street, across the dangerous intersection. And a week or so ago, I walked down and I found this bag, and that many nips, all in one person's yard. They're all exactly the same. They're Dr. McGillacuddy's root beer liquor. So, I walked past it and thought, "That's disgusting." And then I thought, "Well, you're disgusting." So, I went back and I picked it up, and I brought it in, and somebody saw it in my office, and they said, "Well, how many nips do you see?" Because I see this complaint about on Facebook all the time. So, yesterday, when I walked to work after the storm on Sunday, I just picked up the nips that I saw. I didn't dig around in any bushes. I didn't go out of my way. I didn't walk down the gutters of the streets. I just picked up what I saw, and that's what I found, coming down Main Street to Union Street, Union Street to Church Street, and Church Street over here. They're still disgusting because they're all filthy because it was raining. So, I started trying to think. I hate to just bring you a problem, so I like to bring you a solution when I bring you a problem. So, I did some checking around, and there is legislation that's going through the process at the State House to put a five-cent deposit on these, like we have the five-cent deposit on larger cans and bottles. This is not a problem unique to Bridgewater. This is not a student problem. This is, as I've been able to kind of ask around a little bit, this is an adult problem of people buying nips and pouring them in their coffees, or in their Red Bulls, or in their 7-Up, or whatever else they like to drink, and drinking it on the way home, and throwing the nips out of the window when they're at stop signs or something like that, so that spouses don't necessarily know that that's what's happened on the way home, or that police don't find anything in the car, any evidence, so they're drinking and driving without any evidence really present, except, I suppose, a breathalyzer or some sort of other thing. So, it's a pretty universal problem around the state, just not here in Bridgewater. So, I ask Ann to hand out to you some materials. The first set that are stapled together are just some newspaper articles about the beginning of this legislation. It was originally sponsored by Representative Hunt, no relation to me or my husband, from Downend Sandwich. And then the last two pages are the actual legislation itself, so you can see what it is. I spoke to my son-in-law this afternoon, who happens to work up in the State House. He tells me the bill was voted favorably out of the, it's the Transportation, Utility, and Energy Committee on the 7th of February this year, and it will either be going to Third Reading now, or to the Ways and Means Committee. So, my request of you, if you would so consider it, our state representative sits on both of those committees, sits on Ways and Means and sits on Third Reading. You can see, when you look at the sponsors of this legislation, he was not, he did not sign on to this. So, I would respectfully ask you to consider asking our town manager to write a letter to him and to our senator as well, because eventually that will be important, and ask them to please support this legislation and get rid of this kind of trash in our town. I know there's other trash, too, but this is recyclable, and I think five cents for return of these is ultimately practical. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt. We'll put that on for discussion at our next meeting. Perhaps somebody would sponsor a resolution before our next meeting of the town council, if that's the will of the council. Thank you very much. Further Citizens' Open Forum. Seeing none, we'll move on to appointments. First one tonight is Ms. Lisa Sullivan for the Planning Board. We have our paperwork in front of us. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Sousa. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
I think Lisa would be a great addition to the Planning Board.
Mr. Sousa.
I agree.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for coming back to Bridgewater and giving of your talents. Much appreciated. Moving on to appointments, Mr. Kevin Marshall to the Veterans Council. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Haley, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Haley, discussion?
Known Kevin for years, he's a great guy, he's done a lot for veterans, is a veteran himself, and no doubt going to be an excellent addition.
Mr. Gallagher.
Same. Thank you for stepping up.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall, thank you for being in the room. I think you're going to get a unanimous vote here when I call for it. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Could you stand up to me and see who you are?
Oh, could you stand up? Mr. Sousa wants to see who you are, and let the folks see who you are. Thanks so much.
The name I heard, but the face I couldn't put them together.
Process of elimination.
Moving on, we do have a District Four vacancy. We've asked for folks to apply. We have one here before us this evening, and we're going to see whether or not we choose to appoint him. It's been announced at council meetings. We've had more than the adequate time for letting folks be able to apply and considering them, and it's only Mr. Fred C. Chase who has applied, so I asked Mr. Chase to come up and tell us a little bit about himself and what he wants to do on the council, and so on and so forth, maybe answer any questions. Mr. Chase.
Mr. President, thank you. Honorable council members, I appreciate this opportunity to, again, stand before you and introduce myself. I reside at 60 Old Farm Road, where my wife and I have lived for 14 years now. We're 30-year residents of the town, and it's always easy for me to remember the length of time that I've lived in the town, because we moved to Bridgewater just a matter of a few months before the birth of our first child. That's our son Tyler, who graduated from Bridgewater-Rainham High School, and then from Northeastern University. My daughter Hillary also graduated from the middle school here in town. She attended Cardinal Spelman High School and graduated from there, and she graduated from St. Anselm College. And I guess I just point that out, because I think that I can easily speak for them in the sense that they realize they've had a wonderful experience, both growing up here in Bridgewater and as students in the Bridgewater-Rainham School System and the Bridgewater Elementary School. And I certainly know from experience that they've had wonderful childhood and adolescent experiences here in town, and that, to me personally, would be the greatest contribution that I would hope to be able to make to this town in any respect, is to help to preserve the character and, you know, the importance of those kinds of values here in the town. I know that there actually have been some very, I think, positive developments here in recent months with respect to the various ongoing matters in the town. Certainly, the analysis that the renovation or the reconstruction, I guess I should say, of the Mitchell School, at least I think, I take that to mean that we're now on a track to hopefully be able to revive that building and to resume activity there. I think about the recent marijuana ban on retail marijuana sales in the town, and I think that that's a positive development. I think it's something that was probably a difficult decision for some, others maybe not so, but I think that it was important to give due consideration to the will of the voters throughout the Commonwealth, and yet I think a good decision was made, because after all, the town has not ruled out the possibility of processing of marijuana, things of that sort, but the retail sale has been banned. I think that over the past number of years now, the town has taken good advantage of the Green Communities Act and has benefited, including, I believe, improvements to this very building and a number of other town properties through grants that were achieved, and I think that that's certainly something that I hope can be continued. The revitalization of downtown, certainly I'm sure that's a topic that we all would agree is important for the economic health of the town, and I think there are developments there. I don't know the particulars, but I think that the proposal for the Broad Street, I believe it might be 76 Broad Street site, certainly seems to, in my view, bode well. I hope that's something that progresses well. I think other properties in town, you know, certainly might benefit from rehabilitation, and it could be the impetus that would actually begin to foster further improvements in the town. Certainly, there are efforts of what to repurpose buildings, like the Town Hall Building, and I think that the proposal for a community entertainment and commerce center is certainly worth consideration. I'd personally favor that, and I would hope to see that move forward if there's widespread support for it. I know that the zoning study that is being proposed with the help of a consultant is certainly something I think the town will benefit from, and is probably a very good, there's probably a very good juncture in the town's recent history for that to be undertaken. And I would certainly look forward to learning more about that, and if possible, working with either Community and Economic Development or the Planning Board to learn more about that process. We have lots of other concerns, you know, maybe some that aren't potentially quite so optimistic at this point. Certainly, I know the water treatment issue is one that would, seems to me, would weigh heavily on us, and hopefully that there's progress that can be made on that front. And I've read certainly recently that there's some activity with respect to rehabilitation of water mains in the town. Again, something that, the type of capital expenditure that may not be easily, you know, dealt with by the outset, but I think it's certainly something, one of those infrastructure matters that has to be contended with and better now than later. I don't have necessarily any other prepared comments. I certainly appreciate this opportunity to stand before you. I would welcome any questions that, Mr. President, if you seem fit.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chase. I would ask if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak in favor or against appointing Mr. Chase, where that is part of our ordinance, that we do allow public comment on the candidate. You've got to get used to it. You'll be talked about on Facebook. Okay, we don't have any. So, any councilors have any questions for Mr. Chase? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So, you have full papers to run in April?
Yes, I have, and I'm actually just about prepared to submit my papers to the town clerk. I think I'm probably just at about that point. I was explaining to Mrs. Hunt a few moments ago, and I think I just need to double-check my count and make sure I have a little bit of a cushion there, but I'm quite certain that this week I should be able to submit my completed papers for certification.
Okay. So, well, you actually have till March 26th to get the paperwork in?
March 12th.
All right. Must have misread the memo. 12th. 12th. So, you have a degree in government from Suffolk University, too. So, I want to ask you about this process. So, between now and the election, we only have a handful of meetings, and so you're definitely committed to running. Sounds like you're pretty close. Sounds like you're unopposed at this point, although there might be write-ins at the last minute. So, with your background and degree in government and seeing what we do here, why is it important to fill the vacant seat here for a couple of meetings when we seem to be functioning okay until the election? Why should we impose ourselves on the process that's already underway for a very short duration when we could simply step back and allow the process to complete?
Well, I think that's a legitimate question. I guess I would answer it in this way. It was in December, I believe, when President Fitzgibbons had noted for the council that the seat was to be vacated by Councilor Perry, at which point, I believe, the town clerk was instructed to solicit interest from District Four citizens, which during about the first week of January, I did. I think that that particular provision exists for the purpose of, you know, assuring continuity in the representation of each district in the town. I certainly don't think that the, you know, the world is going to end tomorrow if the vacancy is not filled at this point, but what I do think is that, I'm aware of the fact that some time ago, town council had opined that the council is well within its authority to not fulfill a vacancy when a vacancy arises, and I respect that legal judgment. Nonetheless, I think it is incumbent upon the council to not necessarily just rely on that, you know, particular proviso, that yes, they can allow a vacancy to exist, but instead, it seems to me that the council should be more concerned about assuring representation for each of the districts. It's not an at-large seat. It is a district seating, and I think that even for the sake of a number of meetings, it would be helpful and proper for the residents of District Four to have a representative in the position.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, anything further?
Not at this time.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Collobatus.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Chase. Can you outline any other involvement in civic affairs, volunteering on a committee or town committee, any other municipal volunteer work that you've done?
No, I have no other municipal experience, whether elected, appointed, or voluntary. That's for that reason, of course, it was something that I certainly gave ample consideration to, along with having consulted my wife, who frankly has been very supportive, and I appreciate that. I think that it's probably, for me personally, probably a very good time to consider giving service to the town in this manner. Yeah, I'm within a fairly short period of time of retirement. I may have mentioned before, I work in Boston. I commute, as does my wife, and I certainly look forward to, for many reasons, spending more time here in town, and I would like to have a more active role in a number of local affairs.
Thank you. Anything further? Other questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Haley.
Excuse me. The timeline, so, Mr. Wood had mentioned a couple of meetings. Is it literally a couple of meetings? Is it one meeting?
It's four.
Four meetings. Simple question, right? I was actually up there a couple of years ago, on the same purpose, different seat, the seat I'm in today. I feel you, and I had no prior, well, a little bit of voluntary work, but other than that, I was at the will of some folks in front of me that sit here today as well.
Any further questions for Mr. Chase? Seeing none, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Chase?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Made by Mr. Gallagher. Seconded by Mr. Sousa. Mr. Gallagher, any further discussion?
I just want to thank Mr. Chase for stepping up to the plate and coming to our meetings, the last few anyway, and speaking, I think you spoke at the last meeting as well. And, you know, we did go through this process, I believe, once when a large councillor resigned, and the discussion we had as a council then, I think that's the first time a vacancy occurred. Some of the discussions amongst those that were councillors were saying that, and they voted not to appoint at that time, but, and some of the discussion was if it were a precinct councillor vacancy, that they wouldn't have a problem appointing, because that does, would leave that particular vacancy in a precinct. Therefore, at that time, it wasn't that large seat, so they didn't see the need to fill it, because each precinct was still represented. So, I wanted to fill it back then, and I think we should fill it tonight.
Mr. Sousa.
I just want to thank him for stepping up and welcoming aboard. Maybe a little premature, but...
Further discussion, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I appreciate you coming in tonight. I appreciate you stepping forward and sending a letter, especially running for this seat. I think that's the right thing to do. I know how hard it is. I think on the council we compare. I get about 10 signatures an hour. It's really, it's really difficult, a lot of pavement to cover, right? But I also, and I also support this particular action in context, so I support the need to have a procedure in place to fill a seat, to have representation in the district. But personally, I feel that we are very close to the actual election. We've done without the seat for two months. Tonight, we're absent, Mr. George. We've, other people have been absent. We tend to get by. For Mr. Rivers', see, that absence was quite long. I think there's a place for the procedure when we're not in the middle of the election season, but we're right in the middle of the election season. I feel that we may be disrupting the thought process of District Four. There may be someone else out there that wants to run and still has until March 12th to put papers in. 8th. Oh, 8th. It was a 24-hour change.
Stop continuing with details.
It's over. I'm not running, so I'm not paying attention to the dates. But I want to point out, in the election cycle, because we're in the election cycle, none of us here at this table can vote for the seat in the election, right? So, we can't represent Four during the election, and that was a good question about how many meetings. We are literally four meetings, a handful of meetings, away from having the election happen and having representation back in the seat, and I feel it would be disruptive to the election process at this point if we were to take an action and to fill the seat. So, I liked everything you said. I like the procedure, but I'll be voting no tonight. Thanks.
Further discussion? Mr. Collobatus.
I'm inclined to vote to support Mr. Chase's volunteering for the position. Two reasons. The first one, his argument about representation, I find really compelling. It's something that hadn't really occurred to me, but I think that is critical. Secondly, we, Mr. Chase seems eminently qualified, as qualified as any of us were coming to this seat, and we ask for volunteers. And so, it would seem, however few meetings we have left, it would just seem just kind of to ruin our credibility as a body, and also to send a kind of discouraging message to citizens that we're going to, you know, put out this call for volunteers to this position, and someone's going to volunteer, they're going to be eminently qualified, and we're going to say, "Well, no, we changed our mind. If we didn't want to fill this position at this late a date, we shouldn't have advertised it," and the fact that we did, I think compels us to approve, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Collobatus. Further discussion? Yes, Mrs. Loesch.
Just one thing. If there are any other persons who are willing to run, I don't know if you could hear, you have through March 8th to pick up paperwork, and you have through March 12th to bring it back. So, if you feel so inclined, I don't think this is disruptive, because this appointment is only for four meetings. After those four meetings have transpired, we will need someone else to be elected into that seat. So, feel free for anyone who may have not started the process. It's a long one. You have to walk a long way to get signatures, but you can do it. So, just to reassure folks that the process is still open, and by this appointment, it does not stop nor inhibit anyone else from continuing in it.
Mr. Wood?
One final thing, if I could. So, if the vote is in the affirmative, I see the town clerk is in the audience, the oath could happen here now, and the seat could be filled in a few minutes.
Mrs. Hunt? Mrs. Hunt agrees.
That's where your vacation at the same time that your...
Yeah. Councilman.
All right.
One last thing, if I may.
Mr. Haley, then, Ms. Loesch.
Yep. Go ahead.
So, hearing you speak really did, I was thinking more along the lines of, we're so close to the end of the term here, and that you are running, and you've nearly pulled papers, and I think, maybe not for the first time since I've sat down here, but real compelling words from yourself as well as my co-councilors, so I'm putting a lot of thought into it right now. It's interesting.
Mrs. Loesch.
So, if you feel so inclined, I don't think this is disruptive, because this appointment is only for four meetings. After those four meetings have transpired, we will need someone else to be elected into that seat. So, feel free for anyone who may have not started the process. It's a long one. You have to walk a long way to get signatures, but you can do it. So, just to reassure folks that the process is still open, and by this appointment, it does not stop nor inhibit anyone else from continuing in it.
Mr. Wood.
One final thing, if I could. So, if the vote is in the affirmative, I see the town clerk is in the audience. The oath could happen here now, and the seat could be filled in a few minutes.
Mrs. Hunt? Mrs. Hunt agrees.
That's where your vacation at the same time that your councilman...
All right.
One last thing, if I may.
Mr. Haley, then, Ms. Loesch.
Yep. Go ahead.
So, hearing you speak really did, I was thinking more along the lines of, we're so close to the end of the term here, and that you are running, and you've nearly pulled papers. And I think, maybe not for the first time since I've sat down here, but real compelling words from yourself as well as my co-counselors. So, I'm putting a lot of thought into it right now. It's interesting.
Mrs. Loesch.
Mr. Wood, while that's a great suggestion, we may not want to rush the situation. We can have the affirmative vote. If you wanted family or anyone else to be here for the swearing, if they wanted to wear a different suit or tie, we should allow them to prepare for the swearing-in and not just throw it on the agenda because Mrs. Hunt happens to be present.
State of the town.
We are in a rush. This is an emergency situation. We must fill the seat and get it filled for the vote, which is before us. So, why not?
I think we get your point, Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Further discussion? I'd just like to say, to me, this situation is slightly different than the past situation where I did not support appointing somebody. We had three folks in front of us right at the beginning of the election process, right at the beginning of January, to do this. And it was my thought then that I didn't want to pick a favorite and have the town think, "Oh, well, that's the person Town Council wants. I should vote for them at large across the whole town." As it turns out, only Mr. Haley got the work done to get all of his papers signed and on the ballot, and ran unopposed to that year, but he was one of the three. We did put out something for District Four, and, you know, I think that they deserve representation as much as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, all of us. So, I'm going to be in favor of it. And this is going to require a majority of the full council, so we need five votes, and Mr. George is not here, so a four-to-three vote would fail the, would fail the measure. Having said, anything further? Seeing none, Ms. Humbert, could you call the roll?
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Sorry, no.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotis.
Yes.
Six in favor, one against.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Have we resolved the matter of the swearing-in?
Mr. Chase, would you like to be sworn in and sit down, or would you like, I mean, I don't think you've...
I guess what just happened.
I don't think you've had the agenda or anything, but...
Are we breaking new ground here? This is a...
It is unprecedented.
I'd be happy to visit with Mrs. Hunt again, and...
Okay. Why don't we do that? And welcome to stay for the meeting and hear us out and come back at the next one as a full member, and we'll embrace you with open arms.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to take Item J out of order at this point in time, discussion, so that we can get the chief and the superintendent out of here.
Still moved.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Souza. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Chief, superintendent, if you could come up to the microphone. Certainly appreciate it. Obviously, on many, many people's plates and thought processes is school safety, and you guys are the primary folks who make that happen for us every day. And I was just looking for an overview. I don't want you to get into any plans or any specifics. We're not going to ask any plans or specifics from the council because that helps you, if you tell them, it helps the bad guys. So, however you guys want to talk about it, take some time, and, you know, we will have a few questions for you and move on.
Sure.
Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, President Fitzgibbons, members of the council. I'm honored to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District. Obviously, in light of recent events, school safety and security is at the forefront in our nation. I just want members of the council, members of the communities of Bridgewater and Ranham, to understand that we, our primary concern is always the safety and security of our students. I have worked in three other districts prior to Bridgewater-Ranham. And I will say, without a doubt, we have the best working relationship with our public safety officials, which is not always the case in some communities. We meet quarterly with all of our chiefs on both sides of the district, including Chief Delmonte and Chief Donovan from the Ranham Police, also Fire Chief Levy and Fire Chief Janus from Ranham. During those meetings, we consistently and constantly review protocols and procedures. Recently, we have adopted a program in our district with the help of the chiefs and our administrative team. It's an ALICE program that gets away from the traditional lockdown procedures that you see many schools still have in place throughout our nation. I actually went to the training last March with Chief Delmonte and Lieutenant Schlatt, myself, and our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Ryan Powers, and our Director of Facilities, Mr. Paul Fox. We have members of the Ranham Police Force, Detective Louis Pacico, who's also ALICE-trained. And this year, we brought in that program and started off during our Professional Development Week with our teachers and the training of the staff. Throughout the course of the year, we've been doing some of our ALICE trainings and drills, along with the alignment with the police officials and safety officials on both sides of the district. We take our securities, obviously, very seriously in this district, and we realize that when parents entrust us with their children, that's the greatest responsibility that a public official can take on. So, we take that, you know, seriously in terms of what we are bringing into this district and continuing to work, again, closely with our safety officials to review and improve on a weekly basis. So, with that, I don't know if the chief wanted to add anything further.
Yeah, obviously, we wouldn't be able to talk about tactics and special plans. What I can tell you is, as the superintendent has mentioned, we enjoy a very good relationship. Our main function in the school system is to do a weekend to provide the best school environment, the safest school environment. And so, to that end, I can tell you for the last, maybe 20 years or so, that relationship has blossomed, particularly in the last few years. We remember after Columbine, there was a real paradigm shift in how policing treated these types of events in our school setting, and accordingly, we trained differently. And then, of course, after Sandy Hook, I can tell you, we personally went into the school district with the support of the administration, and we spoke to all the teachers and staff members, because they can have the most impact on our children when it comes to safety and saving lives. And we asked them all to think a little bit differently about safety and security in our system, and I think they've done that. And so, I would like to thank the district for allowing that culture shift to take place right here. We see a lot on TV, and we see a lot takes place in other parts of the country, but I'm proud to say we do a lot. We're not perfect, but we do a lot to make sure that this is a good environment for our kids. We do a lot of training. I can tell you, without giving away too much, the police officers in this community about four years ago went through a training department-wide through a grant. And then, last year, we went through training for all police officers, an alert program which enhances what's, superintendent talked about, ALICE, which is a comprehensive plan, if you will, both for us and for them. And we went through a training program last year that implements part of that in a practical sense, and all police officers did that. And you deserve some credit for that, because I can come up with all the plans, and we can come up with all the plans that we want to have implemented, and things we'd like to change and make it a safer environment. We cannot do it without your support. And I can tell you, last year, that was what you provided to us and, in effect, to the school as well. So, I'm just, we're just a partner. We're just a facilitator. It's our job to do what we can to ensure a school environment. As you know, we provide a full-time police officer every day as a school resource officer for all the facilities here in Bridgewater, and that includes even when the resource officer is not available on a particular day, we still have a police officer that's available to the district every day. So, unless you have any specific questions.
Other questions from the council? Could you just kind of say what ALICE is? It's a publicly known program, so, you know, we've heard it.
Sure. It's an acronym for, A is for Alert, so, it started in recent events in Parkland, Florida, they called for Code Red. ALICE really, truly believes in using real language to let folks know where exactly the intruder may be in a building, rather than going through a code system. That allows folks to make decisions whether they should lock down and barricade or possibly evacuate the site. The L stands for lockdown. There is still part of this program, there's still the traditional lockdown, but really, truly, it's about lockdown and barricade. Basically, locking down into a classroom, but also barricading with things within the classroom, desks, shelves, those types of things, because it's all about allowing our staff and allowing our students time for safety officials to arrive. Time is of the essence in those situations. When we talk about the situation in Parkland, Florida, it was a situation, they used a traditional lockdown, but they didn't use barricade. They didn't use other means that are involved into this program here in the ALICE program. C is for countering. This is one that, you know, has to be age-appropriate, obviously. It's about if, you know, an intruder were to happen to come into a building or to enter a classroom, they use what's called a swarming technique to try to bring down the intruder. Obviously, that's age-appropriate. You know, we're not going to be expecting our kindergarten and first graders take that on, but some of, you know, our students, maybe at the secondary level and staff, you know, can use some of those tactics. And the E is for evacuation. Again, using that real, live language to let folks know there may be an intruder in the G wing at the high school. If you're in a wing that's not in close proximity at that point, that may inform you to say that maybe we can evacuate safely. If you are in the G wing, that's probably giving you the information that you need to then lock down and barricade. So, it's, again, such, it's a shift in the paradigm and thinking of the traditional lockdown. It's DESI-approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and nationally endorsed by many safety and public safety officials throughout the nation. So, we're doing a slow rollout, obviously. We've had a few parent nights over the course of the school year in January, one in Bridgewater, one in Ranham. We allowed parents in Bridgewater to attend the Ranham, and the Ranham in Bridgewater should not be able to make those nights. We're very lucky to have safety officials that attended to allow parents, kind of an open forum, to ask questions, not only of school officials, but also of safety officials as well. Again, getting back to that partnership that we have on both sides of the district with our municipal departments is second to none, so. Unfortunately, we have to think this way in this day and age. I wish we could think more about curriculum and getting resources in and teachers. I will say, part of, you know, our budget this year really focuses on proactive ways to prevent some of the issues that are somewhat at the root cause of some of these issues, and that's mental health issues. We have put in several positions for councillors and school adjustment, councillors and social workers and school psychologists, so that we can begin to identify students earlier in the process and put some early intervention in to help some of these issues that, you know, we're seeing, not only here in Bridgewater-Ranham, not only throughout the Commonwealth, but throughout the nation. So, those are some proactive measures we're trying to do at the local level.
You know, I would also say, you know, some credit really goes to the students that go through, and, you know, our kids, because they recognize that they live in a different time. They recognize and appreciate that things are different. And so, when they see us come in, they, you know, "I can come up here, and Derek can come up here, and we can talk to you," you know, about administratively, we plan, and operationally, we know what our priorities are and what our parameters are, and what our objective is, should something like this, you know, God forbid, happen. Investigatively, we take threats seriously. We do all those things, we do all those pieces, but it really requires not only the staff and teachers to help with that, but also the kids as well. And we've done, not that long ago, we did a drill to the degree, I think, that we could in trying to, you know, form a building block, a long-term strategy to provide the students with the best tools possible should an event like this happen. They've been great. And they understand it, they recognize it, they appreciate it, and sometimes, you know, honestly, maybe we didn't give them enough credit for what they, what they understood was really taking place around them.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Oh, Ms. Columbotis.
I would just like to applaud and thank both of you for all your efforts in this. And I think it's really valuable how you're kind of, you're thinking very creatively and looking outside the box as to how to deal with school safety and powering the people who might be dealing with this sort of thing, and kind of being on the leading edge of that. I think it's great. But it's also great to see that you look at prevention. I mean, as both you would agree, that, you know, the best way to stop the negative impact of a crime is to stop the crime, right? So, I mean, it's kind of a pitch to us that Mr. Swenson mentioned that he would be asking for an increase in the adjustment councillor budget, and we should remember that in a couple of months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Thank you for, both for coming in, very timely and very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back to Town Manager's Report, a very brief Town Manager's Report. Mr. Dutton?
Very brief this evening. Just want to let the council know that I am meeting tomorrow with the state, nebulous state, to discuss a couple of issues, but one is our overall affordable housing efforts. The second issue, quite unrelated, is Elm Street. And on Elm Street, we're trying to find funding so that we can complete the road, which has ballooned from what we estimated at $3 million up to about $5.5 million in turn, to completely rebuild that road, which is what's needed. Regardless of whatever the state is able to do for us, and that probably would be tapped out at $3 million, Tony Delmonte and I have been discussing implementing a DIF, which is a district improvement financing plan for the remaining unbuilt parcels on Elm Street. And essentially, what that does is it takes the tax differential on the improvement and uses that directly to fund the capital project, in this case, the road. So, we're working on, excuse me, on that and seeing how we can piece together the financing without burdening the taxpayer more than is necessary. On the affordable housing front, following up with DHCD and the Secretary of Community and Economic Development, on a letter that I wrote back, actually, back in October, which was asking for a safe harbor on future 40B projects, as you know from the Housing Production Plan, which I think is up for a vote this evening, we have currently 545 affordable units in town, and we have either under construction or permitted for construction or anticipating permitting for construction another 400 and change, so we'll be well over 1,000 units of affordable housing if all that comes to pass. So, that puts us at a little over 11%. 40B requires a 10% affordability. So, that, at that point, we'll definitely be able to be in, essentially, a permanent safe harbor until the next census, but what we've asked for is a way to defer and reject 40B applications between now and when we finally get our 10% certified. Along those lines, just to let you know, VIVA, which is the Clermont Project, for 300 units, is close to being approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I would, I expect that approval with conditions, probably tomorrow night at their meeting. Ducksboro is still in hearings, but those are progressing, and Burrell Ave Project has just begun its hearings. And again, if all of those are approved, then we'll be, they'll be up around the 11% number. We're also continuing to negotiate on the PNS on the McElwain School. I have hired one of the state's preeminent land use attorneys to help us with that negotiation and to make sure we do it correctly. We actually have, you know, you can certainly argue that we've got a lot riding on this on a number of fronts, but one of the major fronts is obviously getting a great development in there. But also, I'm very attentive to the initiatives that we take, our own initiatives on housing, since it bears a fairly direct correlation to other grant funding opportunities, especially under the Baker administration right now. So, from my perspective, love to see this project get built, and I would love to see this project... love to see this project, um, qualify us for other, other available grant funding, uh, opportunities, uh, that, that are coming up. So, so that's, uh, that's where we stand with that. The Mitchell School, uh, Building Committee, um, is, uh, continuing to meet. The Committee just hired a, an owner's project manager last week, um, and, uh, agreed to terms of a contract with them, uh, with the firm, and, uh, the next step is the Mass School Building Authority needs to ratify that hire or approve that, that hire, um, and they are slated to do that on March 5th. So, once on board, that OPM will coordinate the hiring of the architect and, and guide us through the remaining, uh, steps of this, this, uh, process. It's no, uh, no secret, we're in the middle of budget season, um, because it happens every year. And, uh, obviously, we've been meeting with the various department heads this year as last year. We've done it in groups, um, uh, for instance, Public Safety Group, um, the Community and Economic Development Group, uh, and so forth. Um, one of the things that, that I actually asked, uh, Tony to give me was just a spreadsheet showing, you know, picking out several of our departments over the last, uh, 18 years and where, you know, where their budgets have gone. Uh, there were a couple of things that stood out. Uh, most importantly, um, the dramatic swings, uh, in budgets, uh, between 2001 and roughly 2010, um, indicating a very frenetic approach to, to the way we were budgeting. And I think that in and of itself probably is one of the biggest, uh, things that we've worked very hard to fix, and certainly with Tony's help and, and Kim Williams, our Assistant Town Manager's help, uh, we've created a much smoother process that takes into a lot of, takes into account a lot of the long-term, um, goals of the department and, uh, and doesn't, doesn't get us to the point where we're swinging, you know, heavily back and forth, uh, from, you know, a 20% increase to a 20% decrease. Uh, I think, I think we've done a good job of trying to stabilize that, so, um, that's a good thing. Um, and that is, that's basically it. I did want to, uh, let you know, we did not receive, um, any requests for the RFP that we issued, uh, relative to the lease of Town Hall. Uh, that said, we will continue, uh, our work on clearing out the, the spaces, uh, including the second floor. Uh, we really want to, whatever we do with that building, we want to showcase, uh, the quite dramatic space that, that is on that second floor, um, and open it up, um, for whatever future use that may be. So, um, I will warn that, uh, because I know there are, uh, community groups that are interested, uh, before we can permit that, uh, it's going to require a very sizable investment, uh, to bring it up to code. I don't think it's any secret that, uh, it needs handicapped access, um, which is, is a sizable expense, but, uh, but we will, uh, put together, uh, or at least get the building in shape and then, and then work on, uh, probably as part of the Community and Economic Development or Community, uh, Downtown Revitalization Plan, uh, a more, uh, appropriate use for that building. So, um, that is what I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Mr. Columbodis.
Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dutton, you mentioned you're, um, in meetings with the state, you're basically asking for sort of safe harbor up, up in advance, you know, right?
We do, we, correct. We wrote them a letter asking for sort of an advanced safe harbor because we didn't want to have an avalanche of applications coming in.
Had they been known to grant such requests? Do you have any idea?
Um, in recent years, I have not heard of granting that request. I think we were a little unique because we were, uh, facing, at the time, we were facing three relatively large projects, um, and we're a relatively small town, um, so we were hoping that they would see fit to give us some kind of safe harbor. The safe harbor we were looking for at that point, um, probably is a little bit of a moot point now because, um, all three are now in hearing, in CBA hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, we're moving on to Committee Reports. Are there any Committee Reports? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I'll report on Budget and Finance tonight. Uh, last night, we met and we discussed a number of items, uh, some are on tonight's agenda. Uh, 21 is on the agenda, 23, 24, and 25, and the Committee, uh, voted, uh, three to nothing to recommend. But on 21, there is a partner, um, order that's not on here, and when we get to that point in the agenda, I will probably recommend that we postpone it until the partner item comes up on the agenda. The Town Manager says that's not a problem. I'm hoping that one of my, um, Committee members, uh, will, will support that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Loesch.
Uh, the Rules and Procedures Committee has about three ordinances in, um, our chambers, um, one of which being a marijuana ordinance, um, that we, uh, are waiting to kind of harmonize with what happens from the Planning Board and, um, CDEC meeting that got postponed. Um, so we're not holding on to anything. We have, we're well aware, we're meeting regularly. Um, we'll also have, um, something coming up for the Council that we discussed, which is reviewing our rules and procedures as a council, as well as deciding on creating an orientation for new counselors, on how, um, how to onboard someone to the council, making sure they have the right tools, having them meet with the right people, um, to ensure their success on the councils, that's something else that will be coming up from the Rules and Procedures Committee. That's it.
Thank you. Any other committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to Legislation for Action. Parking Ordinance, uh, DFY 18007, uh, that we, uh, we have paid parking. Is there a motion to approve?
There is.
Paid by Mr. Columbodis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Mr. Columbodis, discussion?
Um, this ordinance really just sets a very rough framework, uh, by which the Town Manager can, um, institute some paid parking, and, uh, it's specifically designed to not target, uh, people shopping downtown or doing other business, but rather, uh, people at the university who are willing to pay for parking. So, um, and like I said, it's a very, it, it, uh, cites a few sections. There's a school street from Central Square to Summers, uh, to Summer Street, which is kind of down the Art Building there, um, across the quad, and then the Spring Street Lot, which is a, a portion of the Burger King Lot, and then the Town Parking Lot, which is behind Central Square, and then Broad Street, which is at the corner adjacent to the rail station. So, those are the four areas where, uh, paid parking will be instituted. So, we think it'll raise that sorely needed revenue for infrastructure, roadway and sidewalk infrastructure improvements.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Um, so this certainly makes it possible to do paid parking. This itself isn't the paid parking, but this is the zoning change we need to allow the Town Manager to go out and do an RFP and all the other things that need to happen to get paid parking. Um, the, up on the diagram, the municipal lot is covered in this ordinance, and I think that's, that's a good idea, and I support that, and I support the ordinance overall. I think that we have a lot of work, though, on that, on that municipal area to make it usable. I encourage everybody here to take a walk through that lot. It's, it's absolutely horrible. The first sign that you meet after you see the parking sign is parking permit required. And so, it's, anyone coming into that space is, is going to be totally confused by that space, and that's happening today. Um, hopefully, this organizes that better and makes that a better condition for parking to support downtown shopping. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Susan, then Mr. Haley.
One of the issues I had with this is I'm looking for where are the people who are owning and running and working in those businesses going to park? Okay? I don't see anything in here for that. They're not going to pay to park in the parking lot behind the municipal parking lot, which means they're going to park right out in front of their businesses. Well, that kind of takes away from their customers' parking, doesn't it? And it sends them who knows where. I keep hearing that we're doing these parking meters, uh, because of college kids, okay? Um, and I think what's happening is we're losing the whole thought in mind that here we are, redevelop downtown, bring in new businesses, help those pe- businesses grow, make the square safer, and then we tell the owners, the only place you're going to be able to park without paying is directly in front of your business or his. Okay? Doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Dutton?
Uh-oh.
Ms. Loesch, do you have an answer?
I do. We talked about that in our meeting, and there is space for employees to park, um, behind the locations, but, Mr. Dutton, I defer to you to talk more about lot numbers and...
Um, let me, yeah, let me just, um, address that one. We, we actually have a sticker program right now for owners and, and employees of the, of the businesses along Central Square.
That would be the permit that Mr. Wood referred to?
Correct.
Right.
Um, so we do, we do have, uh, and that will continue, so they'll continue to be able to use that lot. Um, realistically, in the town lot, even though it's, um, identified for paid parking, realistically, out of 60, I think we, we designed 60 spaces in that lot, realistically, only about 30 of them would be available for, for, uh, paid, the paid parking program.
Mr. Haley?
There was some talk, uh, that, that I heard for the first time in, in, in town at an eating establishment about this coming up. Uh, although we've talked about it at length, uh, maybe not in detail at length, but as far as bringing it up here, uh, at our council meetings, uh, at length. Um, I don't know if this is posted on the, the, uh, website yet for the town, or at least we could put it on social media, because, uh, pretty much the word on the street is that the entire Central Square area is going to be bathed in yellow. Uh, not the case. And today certainly isn't the day that we decide to erect meters overnight to charge everybody, uh, to the teeth. Clearly, that we're, we're not blanketing out of the town with meters. I think this is a good idea. I support it. Certainly support the, the first steps of researching and RFQ and, and seeing what realistic, uh, realistically, we could look at for, uh, revenue streams and, uh, you know, the major thoroughfare that's, uh, on the map is School Street. The school feeds that street with kids parking in it. Uh, it's, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, where people complain about having these cars from the college, uh, students, but then when it comes time for, uh, you know, a good remedy that could also maybe build a little bit of revenue as, as well as free up some, uh, parking for folks that are, brief transient parking, uh, even, it's, uh, you know, could be welcomed, and, and at times, it's not. Um, there are other places that students go that are private. That's why we're, they're not within this program. A lot of folks don't understand what the, the private parking versus public parking is. The yellow is the public parking that we can affect and make available for our townsfolk to have more access to it without having to worry about students grabbing those spots.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I just, this is a failed policy before we even pass it. Um, and I just don't see the need for this in the town of Bridgewater. We're too small of a town. I don't think the revenue that was projected is going to come anywhere near, but these spots will bring to the town of Bridgewater. And the only thing that I can see down the road is that the only way that this would become successful is if we add on to it, because that's where this will probably end up. And hopefully, at that point, if it doesn't fail tonight, it'll fail then, because we don't need this in the town of Bridgewater. The only place this might work and bring in some money is on the, is on School Street, and I don't think we're really being fair to the kids or the students that are going there, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll see, because hopefully, I'm still here in a year or two when we get our first reports on how this is doing, but maybe I'll be proved wrong, but I, I, I don't think I will.
Ms. Loesch, then Mr. Susan.
Uh, Mr. Gallagher, just so I can understand, I, I believe the university charges students to pay for parking, so how is the town charging them to pay unfair?
Because this is a public roads in the, in the town of Bridgewater, we're instituting paid parking.
Okay. So, we're looking, we don't want to charge the students for parking that...
Well, that street is not for students only. That street is open to anybody that wants to park there.
Correct. And you could avoid it if you don't need to be there, right?
Right. But I can't go and park in a student parking lot. I don't have a sticker to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Susan, then Mr. Wood.
The other side I looked at in here was, who's going to police it? My chief? We noticed the chief is being dumped on him. Recently, stop signs have been put up around here. I spoke with the Town Manager about how come 30 to 40% of the cars just buzz right through them, and he says, Frank, the town has grown so rapidly and the police department has stayed stagnant in numbers. They don't have the manpower. They're doing the best they can. So, in my mind, they're overloaded, let's give them some more help, that's a good thing, but my point is, okay, they're already overloaded, let's give them one more thing they have to do. How often are they going to have to go out there and check all these meters? Is it going to take five minutes every hour? Is it going to take 20 minutes if they have to get out and write a couple of citations? We don't, you know, you, you, it's like stealing from Peter to Pay Paul when you don't even have enough to keep Peter going.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Uh, I have a question about the, uh, School Street end towards Central Square. Today, I think there's signs that say fire department parking, uh, which are left over from before it was painted. Is the intention to make those paid parking spaces or leave it reserved for fire department?
Uh, the intention would be to convert those to paid. The chief has said, the fire chief has said he doesn't have a need for those spaces.
We have enough room for the vehicles to get in and out.
Correct.
Ms. Loesch? Oh, no, and then Mr. Wood, sorry.
Oh.
That's good. I'm done. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Dutton, the enforcement of this, would this not be done by the possible agency that would be running the system?
We would, uh, certainly put that into the, um, RFP, and we would expect that the parking, whatever, whoever the respondent was, to be able to, um, provide a mechanism to issue citations. The way it's written in the, as, and it's the way it should be written in the, uh, ordinance is that ultimately, I'm responsi-, you know, you don't make the parking company responsible, you make the Town Manager responsible for the act, the implementation execution. Similarly, you, similarly, you make the police chief, who's the law enforcement, chief law enforcement officer in the town, responsible for the, the enforcement. But in the RFP, you would go out and, and essentially ask the company to give you a proposal on, on the enforcement end. Worst-case scenario, um, if we didn't get that, you've got a revenue stream that goes directly to, um, the ability to support a parking, you know, parking, um, enforcement officer. You've also got a revenue stream, I think as Counselor Columbodis said, that goes directly towards infrastructure, you know, whether it's, uh, parking upgrades, sidewalk replacements, uh, engineering for, for, um, projects to get on to the tip, uh, list. You've got, you've got a revenue stream that can support a lot of the, a lot of the capital items that we've been unable to address.
Before we move on, I believe the chief has a point to make on this, and without objection, we'll allow him to speak.
Just very briefly, in our budget, if you, uh, will notice in the last couple of years, there's a line item in there for parking enforcement. A few years ago, uh, the Town Manager had looked to address this issue more broadly. Wasn't enough funding, so what it fell to was to us to put a certain number of hours each, uh, year into parking enforcement. It doesn't, doesn't cover every day, but it covers, uh, many days, uh, through the peak times typically. So, there is already kind of a mechanism that's in place for enforcement, as much as I appreciate the added responsibility.
Thank you, Chief. Further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg?
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Susan?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Five in favor, two against.
That would pass. Thank you. Um, moving on to Order FY 18017, Town Council Acceptance of Housing Production Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Made by Mr. Gallagher.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Susan. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
No.
Mr. Susan?
Uh, I have a little extra time, so I actually spent time reading a good portion of the 55 pages, and I saw no red flags. I think it's great. We needed it, and it's about time we get it done.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg?
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to Order OFY 18021. Mr. Wood, did you have a motion?
Uh, motion, uh, this one is the, yes, motion to postpone until, uh, Order 2022 appears until, uh, Order twenty, twenty-two appears on the agenda.
Sorry.
Uh, made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Any discussion, Mr. Wood?
Just that this, this, the other order that we're talking about is a replacement order that has a different dollar amount. So we'll have to rescind this original one and vote on the second one to replace it. And it just makes sense to have the full discussion at that point.
Mr. Haley?
Agreed.
Any further discussion on postponing until we have both in front of us? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, moving on to Order O F Y eighteen zero two three, Transfer Order AFSME Contract Settlement. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Wood, discussion?
The committee did due diligence with the town manager and the finance department, and we're satisfied that everything's in good order.
Mr. Gallagher? Anything further? Any other discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg?
Mr. Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to Order O F Y eighteen zero two four, Transfer Order Bridgewater Police Association Contract Settlement Funding. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Again, the finance committee recommended five to zero, and the budget and finance committee had a discussion with town manager and finance director, and everything's in good order.
Mrs. Loesch? Any further discussion? I'd just like to note again that, um, the police association was, uh, more than reasonable in their negotiations with the town, and it's very much appreciated, um, on all of our parts, I'm sure. Uh, this does require a roll call vote.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Eight and, uh, seven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on, yes, oh, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Chief. Mr. Chief.
Been called worse, so we're good. Uh, just very briefly, I just wanna say thank you on behalf, you know, we, we talk about some of the plans and preparations and what the men and women of the police department are doing. And I would just like to say thank you for recognizing the work that they do. We have a very good department, and it's all about the people. And we have excellent people in this community. I think a lot of people think it's my job to come up and say everything's great and wonderful. But I've said this to you before, and I'll say it to you again. You've, you have some excellent police officers that work in this community, and thank you for recognizing for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to Order O F Y eighteen zero two five, Transfer Order Capital Sewer Special Purpose Transfers. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Uh, as you can see by the description that the, uh, there's been a mechanical generator that failed and needs to be, or mechanical failure, failure that needs to be repaired, so this covers that. The finance committee recommended five, zero, and the budget and finance committee recommended it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher?
Nope, nothing.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'm gonna think about it for a second. Yes. I was just trying to get Mrs. Loesch time to come back to her chair.
I was speaking very slowly. Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Thank you. And that finishes up legislation for action. Uh, we have no old business. We have some new business here, all of which are finance items. So we have loan order, uh, water main replacement, Order F Y eighteen zero two eight. Is there a motion to refer to the budget and finance committee? And finance committees?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Gallagher? Seconded by Mr. Haley. Discussion on this, Mr. Gallagher?
Nope.
Mr. Haley?
None.
Mr. Wood?
So I will recuse myself, because this actually covers my street.
Okay. You wanna step away, or do you just wanna?
Step away.
Said that you did. All right. All right, further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor referring to those two committees say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. With Mr. Wood not taking part. Moving on to Order F Y eighteen zero two nine, F Y eighteen Capital Transfers Phase One. Is there a motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Uh, it's just moving to the committees, right?
Mr. Gallagher?
Nope.
Anyone else? Any comments before it goes off to the committees? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to Acceptance of One-Time Revenue, Bridgewater Preserve Order F Y eighteen zero three zero. Is there a motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees?
So moved.
Made by Mrs. Loesch?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Mrs. Loesch, discussion?
No discussion.
Mr. Wood?
None.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
When you say aye, usually is. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Colum Bodas, this, this one's yours. So do you wanna make a motion with it, or anything like that? This is Order F Y eighteen zero three one, Roadways and Sidewalk Maintenance and Improvement Plan.
Right. Um, I think it's become obvious in recent discussions about our roadways, and just by driving or walking around, that, um, things aren't in the best of repairs. So I just thought it would be, makes sense for us to get a good look at where we stand, what our priorities are, what our plan is, um, over the short term, medium term, long term. So this, um, orders the town manager to create a plan to both maintain and improve the town's roadways, walkways, and bikeways, and report back to the, to the council by June first of this year. I've gotten some feedback from other councillors that perhaps this is better designed as a discussion item, so we can work out the details. Um, I think in the committee, we could, I would extend invitation to the, to the town manager to make, make sure this order is something that he can work with, um, before I brought it back. So I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to convert it to a discussion. Instead, I'd recommend that we move it to committee.
To the Community and Economic Development Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to refer this to the Community and Economic Development Committees? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haley. Any further discussion, Mr. Colum Bodas?
Nope.
Mr. Haley?
Ready?
No.
Any other discussion, uh, before it goes off to the committee? We heard that Mr. Colum Bodas wanna hear? No, no, I mean from other councillors, so you can bring it to your committee. All right, seeing none, all those in favor referring to the Budget and Economic Development Committee say aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Everyone's in favor of it. Thank you. All right, citizens' comments. Seeing none, council comments. We will start to my right.
Um, I just wanna remind folks, there is a training that I'm looking up, happening tomorrow, uh, that's being held by the Bridgewater Citizens for Civility, um, for bystander training. Um, so if you are available tomorrow, I would highly recommend that you go. And that is it.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Just a couple items tonight. Congratulations to Mr. Chase. I think the residents of District Four will be well-served, um, at least for the next four meetings. And then hopefully, you know, the election goes well. Um, I, I wanna speak, though, and I've addressed this a couple other times, about apathy around the town. I, I think that if we had had four or five candidates before us tonight for that seat, that the decision process by the council might have been different. The outcome might have been different, given the short duration before the election. Even the election process, uh, you know, might, might be different with multiple people running. We often see, um, single entries in a, in a race. Um, and it's, I suppose it's a race if it's won, but it's more like a race if it's two. And we don't see that. And, um, we don't see that in other areas, too. The finance committee is absent a member right now. And this is maybe what, what drives some of my earlier discussions. So I think it's well-known that the, that the appointment for the finance committee is the responsibility of the council. Yet, we haven't taken the action to fill that committee, and we are into the budget season. So I see that as a top priority for the council, yet we haven't taken some action. I've approached a couple people about it with the intention of bringing them to the, to the council if they're interested. But apathy makes it so that no one's interested in that position. So what happened Monday night, this is Tuesday last night, what happened last night is the committee couldn't meet, the finance committee. The finance director was all set, ready to present the capital budget presentation that some of these items that we see tonight, or we'll see in a little bit, um, in a discussion. Uh, the, the, our committee, the budget finance committee was there. We passed all the, recommended all the things. But, but the full finance committee, which is responsible for hearing about capital planning and that sort of thing, which is critical to the operations side of Bridgewater, couldn't meet. And it couldn't meet, I think, because it didn't have quorum late in the afternoon, which was a surprise to the finance director. That piece is disruptive. We need to figure out how to get more people interested. No disrespect to Mr. Chase, 'cause I, you know, I think it's great that he stepped up, that he's stepping up now, that he intended back in December to do the process that he's running for election. But we need to find a way to get more people interested so we can, um, we can send those people in other directions. Maybe they're interested in planning board, or finance committee, or conservation, or one of the other fifteen big committees that we have. And we're, we're gonna run into problem time and time again if, if we don't get some action. So that's, that's all I wanted to say about that. Now, on the, on the brighter side,[1530.54]